Recording has started.
All right, I'll call the order, meeting to order, it looks like it's 7:02. So our first order would be to tell about bring Norine as an alternate to take Geraldine's spot. Motion for that?
Tom Tia, motion that Geraldine steps on the line spot right now.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second, Norine is the alternate.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Oh, I gotta call everybody, sorry, I'm not used to doing this right here, this way. Karen?
Yes.
Abe?
Yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes and Norine move, take Geraldine's spots.
Hey, one thing, I don't know if this is for you or Jason, it's saying I'm the host now, and it's asking me to admit people.
Yes, Jason, kick that over to you.
So you just need to admit them.
All right.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Tom Tia, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, Karen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
And Norine?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes.
Hey, Bill?
Yes.
Um, Karen's name's not on the agenda, I don't know, does that matter?
Oh.
Oh, I didn't see that there, um, I don't know that it matters, I mean, she's a member of the, she's a regular member, I think it just being corrected, put it there, but, uh, I mean, she's obviously a board member and, you know, at the meeting, so it's good. Added in for the minutes to be correct, for the minutes when they're presented at our next meeting, it'll be correct. All right, approval of minutes from, uh, looks like the budget workshop from March 3rd, 2021. And I have a motion to approve.
I'll move with your proof to meet the minutes of the budget workshop on March 30th.
You have a second?
I'll second that. Tom T.
And, uh, we will move to approve, uh, Karen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
All right, uh, minutes are approved from March 30th. Uh, budget workshop April 1st, any additions or corrections, or should we approve? Have motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget workshop of April 1st, 2021.
Second?
I'll second. Karen, I'll second.
And move to approve, Karen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tom Talmini? Tom Lansner?
Yes.
And Norine?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved from April 1st. Uh, additions or corrections to the April 7th budget workshop meeting?
Yeah, it was supposed to say Geraldine.
I'm in there.
Yeah, that's the, that was, uh, in there, I saw that, so we can approve as presented to us, and you can just put it in the final minutes correctly.
Okay.
So, yeah, because that was sent to us with an addition, a correction. Um, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve budget workshop of April 7th as corrected.
Second?
It's Karen, I'll second.
Okay. And go for approve, to approve, uh, Karen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
And Norine?
Yes.
Okay. Any additions or corrections to the regular, uh, meeting from April 21st, 2021? Saying, do we have a motion to approve?
If it's Karen, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 22nd, 21st.
First, yeah, first, second?
Second, David King.
And motion, uh, motion has been made and seconded, uh, Karen, yes?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
And Norine?
Yes.
Very good. Additions and corrections to the special meeting, May 12th, 2021. Saying, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, special meeting on May 12th, 2021.
Okay, second?
It's Karen, I'll second.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to approval, Karen?
Yes.
Abe?
Yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
And Norine?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, motion for, uh, minutes from May 21st are approved, and I just lost Zoom. Anybody there? Oh, there you are, come back, I don't know what happened. All right, uh, public participation, do we have any public participation? Communications? Amy, do you have communications?
Um, you have two in your package. It was, um, Geraldine's request for information and some answers to questions. The response back that came from Randy, the Board of Ed Chair. I think she just wanted you guys to talk about what you wanted to do, or if you wanted to do anything at this time.
Yeah. I do know that she, uh, reached out to see if you want to have a joint meeting, with our both boards, just to kind of get us on the same page, uh, my understanding is they did not respond to that request. So I don't know what other thoughts are on that. But I know when Geraldine and I talked, that says, you know, I have no problem if we sit down, have a face-to-face meeting, both boards cross the table from one another and have a discussion, and, uh, we reached out that way and, uh, and did not get a response, so. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Bill, it's Norine, um, I had the same conversation with Geraldine that a meeting would be good, um, and I think a meeting would still be good. But I don't it, if, um, they don't respond.
Yeah, I know, you know, if we make a request and they can't get back to us, they don't want to get back to us, it's, I mean, it's, we're doing our part to, to, you know, reach out and, you know, and, uh, for whatever reason, they don't seem to want to reach back. So, uh.
Hello, do we ever get any information from them on the collective, on their, uh, correction there?
The corrective action plan?
The corrective, thank you.
So, um, yes, we just got back Christine's response that I emailed to everybody this morning.
Oh, I didn't look at that.
That, um, they were working on it, I think is what it said, the sentence about the corrective action plan.
Yeah, it just, it just says they're working on it with no details or submitted. So basically, we, working on it means they're, they've looked at it, I don't know, you know, there's no detail there. And they're not, they're not, uh, at our meeting tonight, it was part of that correspondence they sent earlier today, or, uh, Amy forwarded to us earlier today. Communications or discussion? I guess, uh, well, Geraldine, I don't know if we need to, I'll speak to her if we reach out again, or what we do from here, but, but like I said, I do agree with Norine, I think it's a good idea for us, you know, the new year's starting to to sit down and, uh, you know, maybe discuss last year and going forward and how their adoption of
should pursue that even though they haven't responded to date. The other point I had made was, um, if they assure us that the corrective action plan is being, uh, completed, I would still like to see something other than a verbal, um, confirmation that they're doing it. You know, whether there's, uh, some documentation to show that the bank statements have been reconciled or whatever, uh, and I don't know if the auditor, I don't want to incur any expense, but I don't know if the auditor would suggest something, you know, you need to see this kind of paperwork, because I believe that, you know, we're sort of tasked with making sure that's being done. So I'd feel more comfortable if I saw something in writing, but that's just me. But.
Uh, I'll, I agree, that's a good, good comment and a good thought. I, so I don't think there's any reason we can't make a motion here to, if we want to put a motion in, in place to, to reach out to them again, uh, you know, that way it's, you know, sort of Geraldine just doing it, it's, it's a board motion, this board made that we request a meeting with them. Maybe that'll have more substance or something to it, I, you know, can't say will or won't, but, um, if we agree, that's an idea, we could do that, and then, uh, you know, forward to Geraldine or myself, or whatever, forward to them, say, hey, we made a motion or meeting, we want to have a meeting with you guys, and, you know, it's, so. Someone wants to do that, we can do that, too.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we, um, reach out to the Board of Education and again, request, uh, a sit-down meeting with the principals as had been done previously.
Very good. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Tom T.
Very good, further discussion? Seeing level vote, uh, Karen?
Yes.
David?
Sure, yes.
Tom Talmini?
Yes.
Tom Lansner?
Yes.
And Norine?
Yes.
Very good, that motion will carry and, uh, we'll, uh, forward it, you know, in the middle, then we pass them, a motion that we would, uh, like to have a sit-down meeting, uh, you know. So that's, it's not just a general request, it's a board request, so hopefully that will have a little bit more, maybe, I don't know, we'll see. All right, any other communications, I don't believe so. Yeah, okay. Move on to monthly reports. Turn it over to you, Amy.
So tax collector, we still have $300,000 to collect. 260,000 of it is Walmart real estate taxes. Um, they hadn't paid either, the tax collector reached out, they paid personal property, but they still have not paid their real estate taxes. And they're incurring, I want to say $18,000 a month in interest. So, other things for revenue. Um, we talked about this before, I am not making my budget for interest income. But good news is town clerk, planning, police, and building have all made their revenue budgets. And I think that's it for revenue, we've gotten all our, um, so that's totally done. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on revenue.
I didn't have any, anybody else? Okay.
Expenditures, um, things of note is, um, IT is over in equipment, but that will be covered within the IT budget and savings and professional services or purchase services. Overtime is over, but can be covered with salary savings and other lines. And DPW overtime is over, but they have that storm emergency fund for that. And I don't think there's some significant savings in the employee benefits sections. There's a few more months to pay for, or health insurance, but, um, OPEB is over because of payouts we've done. So we paid our OPEB, um, requirement from the valuation, but then since we've paid other people payouts as they've left, and that one's over budget, but it can be carried, covered the other savings within the health insurance line. I think workers' comp has a little bit of savings in it. Um, heart and hypertension will send to that fund if there's anything extra there, we're a little short and physical, but that's only a couple thousand dollars. And I think that's it. Does anybody have any specific questions on expenditures?
Anybody? Okay, it looks like we're good. So, uh, Board of Education, like, their, uh, what was submitted to us is in our, uh, our packet, I don't know if anyone, there's no answer questions, but if there's any comments on that, we'll take, listen, talk.
Bill, it's Norine.
Yes.
I was really hoping they were going to be here tonight, um, and, but, which is a reason why I think we have to have a meeting with them, um. When they send us these Excel spreadsheets, things move around a lot, uh, and so trying to look at the upper part of it, trying to go from one month to the next month is, it's a task. So, and I was personally looking, focusing for the past few months on their, their other accounts, mostly because the cafeteria account was where we had the problem last year. Um, that's where the auditor came up with the problems. And a couple months ago, I don't remember, like, the last time they were there, I had this, the, there was the issue of the food that they were buying had leaked from $90,000 to $700,000. And then they came back and said, oh, we ran the reports wrong, no, that's not correct. But if you look at those sections of this Excel spreadsheet, they either don't add up, or they take totals and they multiply them, they double them. And then, like, if you looked at last month's in the food service, they had a number on the bottom line that was $100,044, but in reality, it's not that, because they took their subtotal and added it to their expenses. They subtotaled the expenses and then they added it to it. Um, and the same, now this month, the line across border bed district wide adds up, but when you look at their total food service, it just doesn't balance, they, the numbers don't work, and it's confusing to me. And I, and part of the reason it's really bothersome is I know that they were told they need to reconcile the accounts, I don't know if they're looking at that as just reconciling their bank account. I look at reconciling accounts as reconciling accounts. Like, you take your account of 2366 and you make sure your numbers work, um. So it's just, it baffles me every month how these numbers leap around, jump around, and then just don't add up, like, if you look at this month's, it's the very last line on their spreadsheet, the board of it district-wide has available budget of a negative 352705, which is correct, it is, that's the amount of all the expenses, but then they do total food service and they double it to $705,000. I don't, that I need them to explain to me how they're getting to those, why those numbers are on here. Um, and then, like, the FRC above it, which is the, the Family Resource Center. This month, it seems to work, they're down to $60,000, but last month, because they doubled numbers and included things that aren't there, it was, they had 117,376. And now this month it's 60,000, which seems to make more sense, but I don't understand how these numbers are getting on here, if they're taking actual expenditures out of Munis and applying them to a spreadsheet.
And that's the, Geraldine and I talked about that, my understanding is, is they're not totally using Munis, they're using several different programs to do their, their work, and I don't know if that's why things aren't adding up, or, or, or what, I mean, my understa, I mean, to me, it would make sense if you're using, if Munis is the program, you're paying a lot of money to use, use it and have everything there, so everything makes sense, uh, but for whatever reason, I don't know what parts they're using, what parts they're not using, but that's what I was told when I spoke to Geraldine earlier today, is that they're, Andy says they're not.
Did you bring his ball back? Oh, I was playing, looking for it to play with the other day.
It's very confusing, you know, I, and I, I've asked a couple of times about just getting the Munis report, so that we're seeing exactly what's going on in Munis, like Amy gives us, we've got our expenditures, we spend it, it goes in, it adds up, and then things get offset by revenues in certain categories, this is, it just doesn't make any sense, um, and then I noticed on this month's in the food service, they've got a transfer in of $350,000 under their revenue line. So I'm assuming that that means they're giving them $350,000 from their, which is the amount of money they gave them last year, which came up in the whole audit situation as well, so these numbers just baffle me, um, which is, I was hoping they were going to come and could explain it, and I know in the email that we got that said they weren't there, that we could send our questions to, um, to Randy to try to get some of explanation, yeah, so.
So Norine, the only thing I will say is, for whatever reason, right now, they don't have a single dollar in actual amounts in the revenue tied to the cafeteria at all. That maybe goes to bill things where they're really not recording them in Munis.
Correct.
Right now, their year-to-date actual for revenue has not a single account number.
If you look at the 2750 above it, Amy, that's their revenue.
You see? No, that's the budget.
But I think, I, I, right, it says budget, but I think that's what they assume is their revenue, because those numbers are very close to their actual revenue from last year, which is the other issue I have, is that you can't take last year's revenue, we, there must be money coming in.
There is, every month.
It needs to be here, and it's the same thing with things like in the Family Resource Center. If you look at the special items, I'm assuming that's their payroll. Um, because their payroll number from last year in the audit was close to that, but that number isn't moving, like, there's time, but we're, we have to be paying them. You know, people get paid every week or two weeks or whatever, the numbers should be moving, and they don't. Which brings me back to my concern about are they reconciling accounts? And how can they be reconciling accounts if they don't have the numbers in here, so, um, I watched, I went onto their meeting the other night, and I missed the finance portion of it, but I watched their, their, um, video. And they did bring up the, I, that we have requested Munis reports, and they were very clear, we're not getting them, we're getting what we're getting, um, so I, I honestly don't know what to do with it, so I, I just want to put it out there as the numbers don't make sense, and um, I don't know.
But to me, I mean, this, doing it this way is more work, if you enter in Munis, if that's where you're expen, everything's going, it should be accurate, and it should be live, it should be up to date, if that's how Munis works, correct, Amy? Yes.
Did they, did they expand on why they were not going to give the Munis reports?
Uh, the, they have the reports they have, and, um, I'm not sure, one of the board members came in, um, I'm not sure who it was, I don't remember, but said, you know, what they're giving us has more information than they would get from Munis. And that, just what it is, um.
I remember somebody saying that this is what they present to their board, and that's why we're getting the same thing.
Right.
Yeah, but he would, if the numbers don't add up, if, I mean, if we're, and we see the numbers that don't add up, why does their board members not say these numbers don't add up? I mean, it.
So. Which, that's why I think it's important we have a meeting, um, Andy Paquette did say in their meeting the other night that, um, he would be more than happy and willing to have a, um, a basically municipal finance 101 with everybody, anybody who wants to do it, so that we would understand, you know, what, how it works, um. And I, I would go and do that, I have no problem doing that, but I guess my biggest problem is that we're getting sheets that don't add. To me, that's very worrisome, and when you're looking at an account that only has seven lines of expenditures, um, and you're reconciling your accounts, how can these numbers be these numbers? So, um, and then, Amy, I have one other question for you about it, um, back when we talked to the auditor, when the auditor was in, and we talked about the reconciling, he said something to the effect of that you and, that you and the Board of Education should be reconciling monthly. What, what does that have to do, what, what is that?
Well, what we decided to do was the number that's on my financials, um, so on my financials, there's actually a board of that line.
Right.
It shows that we have given them, I think, $19 million through the end of April. It is on page 8A18. So we shouldn't have to reconcile because they're in, they're in Munis, so they should be able to push a button for Fund 1010 and get their numbers, and for Fund 2750 and 2365, and they're different funds that they have, they should be able to push a button, no different than I do when I get you guys revenue or expenditures or CNR. I have many other funds, too, all the grant funds, all the donation funds, so I can push a button for any of those funds, and a report will print out revenue or expenditures or both. So depending on what the purpose is, um, so those should all be available, so the reconciling we decided to do was that we would keep track of the money we gave them so that our revenue, their revenue on their side would be offset by our expenditures in my fund. So that is the number, which is 19580, at one point, we tried to match, we were off, and when I sent him back my answer, I never heard. So, he knows we don't agree, but, um, I'm, I don't know if that's just a case where they haven't finished catching up with all their bank recs. I don't think, when they originally told us they would be done after their training in February or March, I don't think they're done yet. Um, and I definitely don't think so, seeing that cafeteria has no revenue in it at all, if they're making deposits and recording them, there should most certainly be revenue in the cafeteria fund. And in this case, there is none, so I did make a couple notes on your guys' questions, I don't mind taking that, those pages and sending them back over to him and saying, here are some of the specific questions that came up. But, um, I'm just as likely not to get an answer either.
So if there's no, if they're not showing any revenue, they're not using Munis for the revenue side, then, correct?
That's what it looks like. I mean, there's a dollar in the cafeteria fund, and I know that's not true, I mean, they're budgeting it, so clearly they have some numbers, but they're not recording anything as actual, the year-to-date actual column is empty, all four lines have nothing in them.
It seems like a lot more work to keep, run two programs to keep your books.
Yeah, I, I don't know, and I don't know what their issues are, um, I had a lot of experience on Munis, so for me, it was very easy to set up the ledger and know what I wanted it to see, that I wanted, you know, general government to be one account, and, and UCOA told us what it needed to be. They told me that the four 111s were going to be all the general government. The four twos were going to be public safety, the four threes were going to be public works, I mean, they told me what department people needed to be in. So it was very easy to set it up that way, so that when I push a button, it comes out, all the general government people, and then what allows me to do is I can then pick just by the category. Somebody wants to know what we spent on public safety, I can pick just that four-two category, and it will give me everything public safety related. So I don't know if it was in the setting up, I, I wasn't physically there as they set up, we were gathered for training, but they would get us started, and then we would go off and do our own, getting all our accounts set up, all our, or set up, so I don't really know what he did. But definitely, he's definitely not using it, because there should definitely be money cafeteria fund for revenue.
Amy, it's Noreen again. If, if one is send them about the questions that I had, I really would like to know about the $350,000 transfer in they're doing to the cafeteria account. Um, yeah, did it brought their bank account up to, and don't, I might be wrong here, but it was 100 and some odd thousand.
Yeah, I think it either gave them 160 or 190.
Right, yeah.
It was double what they needed when they sent the 350 for last year.
Right, and then if, you know, looking at the numbers that they put here under revised budget, I'm thinking those might be what they're expecting in revenue. If they're doing that, then that bank account with $350,000 more this year is going to be like $400,000.
Probably not, if they lose, if they lose the 150 or 160 that they've been losing every year, they would eat up what they had, so it, but it still would be probably the 350.
Right, so I I'm just curious why they're doing a $350,000 transfer in.
And that wasn't in the board of ed meeting?
No, no, and I I know they did have $120,000 in the budget that was set aside for food service, but if you look at that line on their sheet, that's still sitting there. So I don't, I'm, I'm just like to understand, are they really going to need to give them another $350,000 this year? And I I understand we need to pay, our kids need to eat. I just want to know, oh, you know, because I I know they were supposed to be working on getting it figured out so that they're not losing so much money in that account. And then, not to make your life any harder, Amy, but if you could just ask them about the Family Resource Center, because based on these numbers, it's looking like a $60,000 loss possibly.
Yeah.
And the Family Resource Center for the last three years has lost money, like in the 30, $40,000 range every year for three years. And it it's just one of those, I believe that the Family Resource Center is vital to our town. There's a good amount of kids who go to school, go there for their childcare. And I don't want it to become a situation that all, like the cafeteria did, that all of a sudden it rears its head that, you know, they're, they're just not able to sustain it without town resources. And that's, it's understandable, but for many years, up until about three years ago, the Family Resource Center didn't, they, they never lost money, other than maybe one year or about eight years ago, if you go back through the audits. So I'm just a little concerned as to what's going on there.
So is my question to them, will you be contributing to make them positive?
Yeah, or maybe, or, or am I reading the report right to see that it's looked like a $60,000 loss?
Well, they got 180, 286 in revenue and they've spent 336. So yes, they're definitely running a loss.
Right, so I, you know, I just don't want it to become a situation where, you know, two more years for, because last year, they lost money, but they had money in their bank account. They had $30,000 to start the year with based on the audit. This year, they're, they're not going to have any money, so they're going, and I just don't want it to become a cafeteria issue where we all of a sudden find out that we, the town needs to contribute to this program in order to, you know, that, that's a policy decision, but I just don't want it to rear its head unbeknownst to.
All right, so these are what I have for questions. Why are they doubling up the food service expenditures going from the 352 to the 705? Why there's no revenue in cafeteria fund if deposits are being made? Why are you transferring 350,000 again from general fund budget of 120 not yet spent? Their FRC, why the 117 last month versus the 60 this month? And then will you be contributing to make them positive? Does that get all your questions?
Yes.
Is that something else about why something was staying the same amount?
Oh, um, the, let me make sure here.
The special items?
The special items, which I'm assuming that is their salaries, because if you look at the audit, that was, you know, if you add on a month and a half, that was about the salary range last year. So in March, it was 336. And this month, it's the same amount of money. So where's the expense for the?
It could not be staff, it could be a contract. So it could be that they've paid them already, like some of our insurance, we pay in July for July, August and September.
Okay.
So it could be, if it's a contract, it could be that they paid them, but I'll ask why it's the same amount in both.
If it is a contract, then like where are their salaries being expensed? Because there's nothing in there that's, yeah.
Are they employees?
I believe so.
Okay. We'll ask why it's the same. Okay. I will put together an email tomorrow.
And just as a side note for everybody, after I watched their, their own meeting the other day, their last meeting, they did talk about the cut, the cut from the budget. And their decision basically was that they're going to take money from this year to, that they have remaining for this year to buy a lot of supplies and things like that, that they can buy in advance, cleaning supplies, toilet paper, paper towels, which will allow them not to have to cut anything to get to the budget number we gave them. There'd be no staff cuts, there'd be no program cuts, there'd be no anything. So, um.
And what was that meeting date?
It was, um, last Wednesday.
Yeah, 12th, I think.
Yeah, so they had that discussion, that was how they were gonna, they're not, they're not foreseeing making any changes to staffing or sport programs or any of that. They're going to use money from this year to offset things they would have bought next year and cover it.
Are they recording their meetings?
They are.
Okay, because the auditor would not be happy to hear that. That's no, you cannot spend this year's money on next year's things and, and recognize it as an expense in this year. That's a huge no. Never mind a couple hundred thousand dollars worth.
Um, they said in the meeting, when Amy, they said that they kind of been doing it every year. If you go on the Board of Education website, if you go to the Board of Education section, there's a, uh, meeting videos, audio, click on that, you can, you can watch the whole meeting. I missed, I, I was at their meeting, but I missed the finance piece of it, so then I went on and watched it, so. But that, that's what they talked about is relative to the cut to their budget. Just as an FYI. And now I think I'm done, Bill.
All righty, well, it was, like I said, I don't, you know, I, I see what you're saying. I mean, when you read the reports, like I said, things don't match and there's definitely questions that need to be answered. Anybody else before we move on? Okay, move on to transfers.
So I just have two. One is your three and a half million dollars to pay down the debt. The other one is for the registrars, their food they bought for their election. We had a category called food, but they didn't have anything budgeted in it. It previously had been in election workers. I'm taking it out of, to be consistent with UKOa.
All right, somebody want to make a motion on number 37?
I will, I'll move that we transfer 3.5 million dollars from use of fund balance to debt principal.
Okay, we have a second.
Tom Lanzner, I'll second.
All righty, and discussion. I was gonna say, I think this is.
Yes, my only comment is it was voted on.
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's great that the voters realize this is a good thing for us to do and help us move forward, so.
And my goal is to get it all done by June 30.
Yeah, but that was one of the questions I was gonna have sooner or later, but then I saw in transfers, so whether I'm doing it this year or next year, so the answer is this year, so let's roll. All right, let's, no, if there's no other discussion, Karen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tom, tell me.
Yes.
Tom Lenzner?
Yes.
Noreen?
Yes.
Okay, transfer request number 37 is passed. Number 38.
I'll make the motion to move $475 from election workers to.
Wait a second.
Tom Lanzner, I'll second.
All right, discussion. All right, proceed to vote. Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
Tell me.
Yes.
Tom Lenzner?
Yes.
Noreen?
Yes.
Okay, and number 38 is approved. Here, okay. Next, CIP analysis.
So what you have in here is, basically, it just takes all the pieces in the C N R account, which is the 305, which are the second, after the first couple of pages of the analysis, the rest of the pages are there. But what this does is tell you what they started the year with, what our allocation was, if we did any additional appropriations, they've moved it from somewhere else, if they've done any transfers or what they've spent out of it to get their balance. I'm supposed to be giving this to you quarterly, but somehow I missed it. I don't think the last time I did it was last April, uh, last August. Oh, sorry about that, but I will do it more often. It just gives you a little more information. We'll continue to get the 305 report every month, which just shows the balances really. But this, I just think is helpful if people are thinking about capital projects, we should be allocating on the $920,000 that was approved in the budget. It should be the, the CIP group should be meeting and then sending it to the Board of Selectmen, and then you guys would have to do the transfer, usually in July or August. So I think it's helpful just to know what's out there.
Amy, this is Jason. I have a question on the lease purchases. Since the prepayment of that was also approved, should that be a transfer in the new fiscal year?
Um, I guess it would have to be, right? Because it's going to be part of the next year budget. So it would have to be a 2122 budget.
And that, that can be transferred into the CIP line for, for capital projects, right?
Yeah, yes. It's actually part of that line. If you looked at my general fund budget, that there's two pieces to my CIP, one is the allocation that goes up in C N R, the other one is the leases. So that will be available for allocation to CIP projects.
Great, thank you.
All right, do you have any questions on the CIP accounts? Any further questions? Okay, let's see what we got up next. So that's a new business, the appointment of auditor.
Yep, the state requires us every year to appoint them, even though we have a three-year contract. We did it in spring 2020, so it was 2020, 2021 and 2022. So they will still be our auditors for next year too, but we just, this is a process that you just need to make a motion to appoint Mahoney Sable as our auditors for the 3021 fiscal year.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Mahoney Sable as our auditors for the 21 fiscal year.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, proceed to vote. Karen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tom Tellini?
Yes.
Tom Lenzner?
Yes.
Noreen?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And 9B tax, transfer to something suspense.
So this is the once a year, the tax collector, anybody she's tried to collect from and can't, either deceased, moved away, the business is closed, she is asking for you to transfer a total of $7,000 of accounts. We can still collect them, but once you transform to suspense, they're not on the active receivable list. And she's really thinking these are ones she won't be able to collect, but every year we have to do a motion to transfer these to suspense. And then Jerrilyn or somebody has to sign it. If you look on the bottom of 9B1, I have to get the dates fixed before somebody signs it. This has it May 13th, which must have been the day Patty did it, versus today, which is really the 19th, which is what it's going to have to say.
So there's $712 in real estate and then personal properties, 26 in motor vehicles, like almost $30,000.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, or sorry, as amended, after you fix the date, Amy.
We have a second. I'll second that. Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question for Amy. I was looking at the total of 26,000, and over half of that is one particular individual each year, the same person. And the reason is can't locate bad address. Do you know, is that a collection agency that returns that response to us? It seems like a lot of money. Every year it was three, four, five thousand. And I don't know if there's any chance of pursuing the person or not, but.
I would be very surprised if Patty hasn't Googled them, searched out their company.
Yeah.
She, she tries very hard to get, so she tries all her collection stuff first before they send it to the collection agency.
Yeah, because that, that one particular person's name, just, it just stuck out because, you know, it's the highest amount in each year. So it looks like that would be great if we could find them, but apparently it's not, you know, the address just hasn't been available.
Unless somebody actually knows who he is and know where, know where he is.
Yeah.
We actually had somebody come in the other day and they were trying to pay, they had to pay 13, 14 and 15 car taxes because they went to register a new car and they wouldn't let them because they had outstanding taxes. And then we found out that half his cars were registered under junior and half were not. So he went to register it under whatever one that he hadn't been registering it under, and it triggered that he couldn't register it, and, and he had to come pay like $1,200.
Good.
But they were taxes from way back then and he was annoyed that he, he had been registering cars right along and not a problem. Unfortunately, that kind of stuff with a junior or not a junior, all that stuff matters.
Oh, yeah.
So it could be anything, but if anybody knows anybody on the list that says cannot, and you know where they actually live, please call Patty. You will make sure she goes, these are still able to be collected. It's just that they're, they won't be actively pursued.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Very good. Any further discussion? Okay, we proceed to vote. Karen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tom Tellini?
Yes.
Tom Lenzner?
Yes.
And Noreen?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Uh, unfinished business, we've kind of talked about the BOE corrective action plan under the reports, unless anybody else has any other comments? Okay, we'll move on. Board member comments for tonight. Karen?
Yeah.
David? Tom Tellini?
Not really, it's maybe someday we can do this in person.
Yeah, I think Jason said we got one more month anyway. July might be in person, hopefully. Tom Lenzner?
No, none for me, thanks.
The governor extended it until June 30.
Okay.
The ability to do remote meetings.
June 30, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Noreen?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, our next meeting will be June 16, 2021, and it'll be on Zoom again, and hopefully for the last time, so we can all see our smiling faces in person again. So we can all see our smiling faces in person again. And, uh, with that, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. We moved. Number second.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, we'll proceed to vote, Karen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tom Talavini?
Yes.
Tom Lenzner?
Yes.
Noreen?
Yes.
All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and we'll talk to you all next month.
Good.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Yep.